Seven o'clock meeting on, what's today's date? October 2nd, 2018 of the planning board. Jennifer Luz is with us via remote participation. So Jennifer, can you see and hear us?
I can see the ceiling, but I can hear you.
Okay. We'll turn you as necessary if there's anything to see.
There we go. Okay, thank you.
All right. So because Jennifer...
Roll me one.
Because Jennifer is participating via remote participation, any... And I do find that being in Texas is a hardship for many levels. And she cannot be here today. All votes will take place by voice vote of individual, okay? So we all have to, we have to do it each person. Okay. We only have a couple of things on the agenda, so we'll try to move through them and then have a, just a short discussion at the end. So administrative review, 1717 Turnpike Street, Connie and Nick Vargatos. This was the application for our consent for this particular item to go back to the zoning board of appeals. We heard from the applicant and architect as well as neighbors last week. The vote was 4-0 to deny our consent. We instructed Monica to put together a draft of our decision. We did not give her permission to, or vote to give her permission to sign that or to effectuate that, so we'll just do that here tonight. We'll effectuate that. All right.
In your package, I see a copy of your draft, which was also emailed. I noticed a couple punctuation issues, so you'll see that. Oh, that's still there.
So the first thing, it says the planning board hereby consents to allow the petitioner, so that's probably not right?
Yes. I will mix that up.
The planning board hereby does not consent or denies consent.
Right.
It denies consent.
Are we going with that language? Because on the back it does say withhold consent.
Withhold consent is good. I like withhold consent.
It should be consistent front...
Yes, agreed.
I will change denies to withhold.
Well, so we're changing consents to, the planning board hereby withholds consent to allow the petitioner. And can you put withhold in bold?
Okay.
Does Jen have this document?
I did attach it. Did you get a chance to? I will send it...
Was it attached to something? I don't think I have it.
Really? Okay, I'm sending it to you right now. It should be in your email, but I will resend it.
If not, we'll read it.
I'll just do this.
Oh, wow.
I'm sorry.
It's also attached to...
If your email lets me out, I'll review it right now.
So bullet point three says the applicant submitted specific and material changes to their application. I mean, we found that they weren't material, so...
Would you like to say...
Just say specific changes.
Okay.
Even let's just go, or it's, or just changes. Yeah, the applicant submitted changes to their application indicating that bullet point is fine, the first bullet point.
Okay.
Pro's building was setback. Variance, variance.
The third, the one on the second page, the requested side setback variance has reduced from the 40 feet. First of all, the first two were, on the second one, we're talking about the side setback, not the variance. So I think it's, the setback has reduced been 40 feet compared to something, I don't think it's a 57% reduction. I think the reduction is, the side setback is from 40 to 36 feet.
Okay, I will change that specifically. All right, so the requested side setback has been reduced from 40 to 37 feet.
So I know I'm not voting on this, but the very last line, vote was 4-0 in favor, I think it's in favor of the motion rather in favor of the application. Is that right?
That's correct. But was 4-0 in favor of the motion to withhold consent?
If you sent that through to my Gmail account, I just haven't received it yet.
Okay, let's see. Try again.
One other comment. Monica, I don't know if you're sort of reading down, but in the decision part where it says the decrease in the front setback of, by five feet is minor, it's not a material change. I think you had, I have to add, it is offset by an increase and the, it is offset by a decrease in the rear setback by five feet. So all they did was slide it. They didn't net change it at all.
All right.
The third one, it should be, was not materially changed. Zoning Board of, is zoning Board of Appeals or is zoning Board of Appeal?
It's Appeal, if I'm not mistaken.
I think it's Appeals.
I will be consistent with whatever they say on there. I'm sorry, Jennifer.
Jennifer, did the link come through to you yet?
I just refracted my email now. No, I don't see it. Did you send it to my... I don't have it on either of my, either my town email or my regular email.
It went to your Gmail. I'll try again. You might end up with 10 copies of this.
All right, why don't we, well...
I've got it now. I've got it now.
Good, okay. Sorry for the technical.
It's a good thing I'm a speed reader. Give me one second. Okay, I've got it. Thank you.
Okay, so does anyone have any additional changes other than the ones we've noted? And Monica, you've gotten down the ones we've noted?
Yes.
Okay. So could we get a motion to, to file the decision as amended? To allow the planner to file the motion as amended?
So called. Second.
All in favor by voice, by individual vote?
John Simons' vote, yes.
I sent for a lot of, yes, sorry, I'm just going in the normal order.
No, it's already, are you okay to vote?
Yes, I vote yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Aaron Preston, vote of yes.
And I also vote yes to, to the motion. Monica, I would just ask that once the changes are made, if you could just email me a copy and I'll just, okay, it has what we've gone over and then you can file it.
Fantastic, I'll send that to you much later after you.
Awesome. All right. Seven, there's on Ree Street subdivision, administrative review. The applicant, we had upon Mr. Simons' motion, which was seconded and voted upon unanimously, we accepted their extension to November 13th with the hope that maybe we can get this voted on, on the next, the next meeting if everything's done. We have that in writing, so I just want to vote on that, on the written submission. Does everyone have that definitive subdivision extension to November 13th, 2018?
Accepted as written.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Individually, sorry.
John Simons, I vote yes.
Jennifer Luz, I vote yes.
Aaron Preston, yes?
Yes.
Peter Boynton, yes.
Okay.
I think I can still vote.
You can.
Yes.
The actual, the public hearing for Ree Street subdivision was continued until October 16th, so we're not taking any testimony on that. Mr. Boynton did miss the last meeting, but has filed an affidavit that he has watched and reviewed the tape. He's only missed one meeting, so he will participate in that hearing going forward on the 16th. Okay? Want to do the minutes? Motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes for September 25th.
All in favor, vote individually, please.
John Simons, yes.
Jennifer Luz, yes.
Aaron Preston, yes?
And I will vote yes. And that's 4-0.
Fantastic.
All right. And now future planning items. Jennifer, I know you're kind of busy. Do you want to stick around for this, future planning items?
Sure, I can stay on for like another 15 minutes. I'm going to have to leave.
I think 15 minutes sounds good. So why don't we start, so we put this on the agenda. We're kind of in a, I wouldn't say a lull, because we're never in a lull, but there's not, we don't have too many big projects now that we finished the master plan. And we're starting to come up to the time where warrant articles are going to start popping up and we should start thinking about them. So in conjunction with the planning department, we put this item on just for people to kind of maybe talk about things that you might be interested in looking at or having the planning board look at, or even things that you might want to just come in front of the board outside of warrant articles. So why don't we hear first from planning on kind of what you guys are working on and then we can just kind of talk about any of those items and then just kind of go down and, and if you have something you want to talk about, well, let's go, go with that.
Okay, fantastic. Well, currently I'm working on two projects. One involves the development of a business development guide, which is to assist businesses through the permitting process. So what it does is it details all the permits that they'll need, not only from planning, but also some, some other departments as well. And it just guides them through the process to make it easier. So by the time they come before the board, they know the process, they know the applications, they know exactly what's expected. And so anytime they come before us, they'll be offered this information in addition to what they're, what they already receive. So that should just make things a little smoother, especially for smaller businesses. The second project, which was mentioned actually a couple of months ago, we're actually really kicking into full gear, would be the sidewalk connectivity project. And what happened was the town manager compiled or actually put together a list of, actually a group of us that are employees as of right now. So it's planning, Department of Public Works, police, school, and information technology. And what we're going to be looking at is our, our sidewalk system to figure out how to improve it in a positive, negative manner that helps out the most people. So the idea is to connect people to schools better, to connect people to open spaces, connect people to parks. And so we received a grant that allowed us to, to go to MVPC and to actually bring interns in this summer. And what they did was they evaluated the existing sidewalks. So now in November, we'll be given some information which we can, which we can use. So the information should contain sidewalk locations and it should also contain sidewalk conditions, so we can really see where we are. So using that information in conjunction with information from the Department of Public Works, as well as what's already in our system, we really should be able to, to narrow down where it makes sense to, to increase sidewalks. Also, we'll be looking for citizens, citizen stakeholders to help with the process too. But of course, the first step is gathering information so we know where to go. That's where, that's where planning is at right now.
I don't see any off the top of my head. Is there any role for our board in either of those two projects?
Yes, and looking for, especially since you guys will have a major part in implementing this when it comes to plans, you'll probably be the first, one of the first people that may be able to say, oh, there's a new project, maybe you guys have a real feel, a real feel on the built environment, being, being the planning board. So when we, when we move forward with that data, I will definitely come back and say, hey, if there, is there anyone that will be able to meet with us and really inform from a, from a citizen perspective?
All right. Anybody have some items that they'd like to discuss?
What about Royal Crest?
So Royal Crest was, they came here maybe a month, two months, within the last two months, they came and talked in very, very, very general statements about doing something great, making Royal Crest great again. And they're definitely very interested to hear where they're kind of going with that.
Okay. As of right now, they're still, as far as I know, it's still kind of general speak. So I could get more information later on as the, as the project develops or moves, moves forward and maybe have some that are in...
They're doing an assessment, right? To see like the, the state of things, sort of like your sidewalks, like just figuring out what's there.
Yes, it's kind of like fact finding, figuring out highest and best use and things of that nature, but it's still very general. So I assume you guys would like a, an update as soon as possible.
When there's something more definitive, that would be great. I mean, it was great to hear that they're doing some work on it and I certainly think we'd be happy to guide and work with them, but...
Yeah, I mean, there's two things to me that I sort of would like to make sure we're in the mix on. One is if they have some interesting ideas, I don't want the existing zoning to be perceived as a barrier for something imaginative and creative. And the second one is that, is, is the timing. We, you know, it feels to me that this is not something that's going to be ripe for this coming spring. It's probably a year later, but what we want to do is if they're doing something bold and it needs a lot of outreach and so forth, let's get us involved in it fairly early. If, if we believe it's right, we may have to sell it, so. And I'd hate to be caught in a situation where there's insufficient time.
May I ask what the, what they presented? Like what was the conversation about with Royal Crest or didn't they provide?
They said that there's like, I don't know if there's a new investor or a new group coming in and they were just looking at what is there, going, you know, figuring out what they actually have on the ground and then trying to talk through some ideas of how to make it better.
Did they take into account like the student population from Meramec? Or did, I mean, I would think that that, like what I see happening there is they've sprinkled those students in like across, right? So there should be like an area where if Meramec's going to continue, there should be like students in one area. And then maybe the residential stuff or the housing over here, and maybe they can even do some like mixed use. You know what I mean? Like I think there's a lot of opportunity to update that.
Well, that's what they're talking about. I mean, it's, I mean, they could go anywhere from just tweaking around the edges to literally tearing everything down there.
And just redoing it. It goes pretty far back, so there's quite a bit of...
And obviously, Meramec is one of the players in this because of them being a fairly significant stakeholder, so.
We didn't hear anything about whether it was going to be, you know, whether they would want to do like a thousand apartments or whether they want to do like a retail mall with apartments or whether, or whether they want to build a giant swimming pool or whether they want to become part of Meramec or, and I'm just making things up. I mean, they, we really have no idea.
They really just came in and said, hey, we're assessing the current condition and we'll keep you posted, but you know, we're, we're, we're looking at things over there.
It's changed so much over the years, that's all.
It was kind of more like an introduction of the team involved in the process and a very thin...
And are they local to here now or is the management not here anymore? I had thought that they, the real estate part of it had relocated from here. Is that not true?
They've flatly sold it.
Yeah, like out of state. So I was just wondering.
These guys are a little bit, I think they're in Texas or something like that, but they're much more removed, so.
Yeah, but the group that's doing the analysis, they're, they're Boston based. They've done, they've done a number of projects within, within the Massachusetts area. And so I can say if there's more information, maybe they can come back and start, you know, kind of talking about what they're specifically, more specifically what they're looking for and, and be engaged in the process.
Yeah, good opportunity there.
So one thing that I was thinking about is, is I'd like to start, if we can, trying to bring in other, asking maybe some people from other departments or even from, you know, major areas like Meramec and giving us kind of updates about what's going on. Because sometimes I feel like we do some of this stuff in the dark and it would be nice to know, like when we had that Board of Health in for the marijuana thing. If there are departments that have activities that border on planning or could use help from planning, it'd be nice to kind of have that discussion.
Well, I'd like to give an example of that.
Yeah, so...
I actually have an item and John will remember this item perhaps. So this would involve the Department of Public Works. And this board is the special permit granting authority, of course, for the watershed protection district. And a question that I had posed some time ago, and we never really quite got traction with DPW on this, but we have these watershed protection bylaws. The purpose of that is to provide a level of protection for the watershed that drains into the lake, which is the drinking water supply. And they went into effect around about 1987 because of the boil water, water. And the intent was to provide more protection for that drinking water supply. So my question to the board as the special permit granting authority is how are we doing? What measures do we have? And it turns out we do have measures, but we've not been able to, I think, take advantage of them. And the measures are this. In 1987, when they went into effect, the town had a watershed plan, study done. And that plan did a number of things, but one of the things it did was it took measurements of the raw water supply in the lake. And there's a whole range of measurements and some of these are, you know, sort of tertiary type measurements that get pretty esoteric, but there are also some sort of fundamental, basic baseline measurements. For example, what's the level of phosphorus, what's the level of nitrogen? Those are important measurements because those are related to the potential for algae, for example, some of which can be harmful to the water supply and expensive to remediate with a water treatment plant. So the idea would be have raw lake water measurements today compared to the baseline in 87 and see are these watershed protection bylaws effective? Have they maintained the baseline quality of the raw lake water? Has it improved? Maybe the watershed protection bylaws are more strict than they need to be? Has the quality of the raw water decreased? If so, why? And the idea is that we actually have a measurement available. Now, the water treatment plant actually has a testing regimen of not only the treated water, which is reported on the town website and it meets or exceeds EPA standards. They also test the raw lake water, which is not reported on the town website, so we don't see that. So what I would like to see is the planning board request of the Department of Public Works come to the planning board and present not all of the raw water measures, because some of them, as I said, get, you know, kind of difficult, what does that mean? But just the basic baseline measurements. Compare them to the 1987 study. We doing better or we doing worse? What I'd really like to see is the last five or 10 years, a trend line. Because if we just see a sample of value, it doesn't really mean anything to us. So I sort of think of the, of the lake as an asset. This is less of a sort of tree hugger issue and more of it's just an asset. It's a financial asset to the town and it's a health asset. So I think of it almost as a, as an investment, a 401K. And you don't just go to the ATM and keep taking out money until it stops. You, you look at your investment and you look at the trend lines. Is my investment increasing? Is it stable? Is it decreasing? Uh-oh, why? We should look at the lake the same way. And the reason the planning board should be involved is because we are the special permit granting authority and we ought to take advantage of objective measures that could be used to evaluate how are we doing?
So how about for our November 16th meeting? Could we invite in whomever you think might be appropriate?
Well, we have asked before and I think there was interest, but we never actually got the measures or the trend lines. I'm not quite sure why, John.
Yeah, I think it was probably more inertia than anything else, but I mean, I think it's not a bad idea to engage them, you know, and, you know, create a rapport with them and, you know, I mean, because it's, you can even go bond that to, you know, some of the metrics on the wage treatment plan and so forth and things like that. Because there's a lot of different roles, monitoring roles that they play. And, you know, why not work together on that? We may find, you know, I mean, it ties into the sidewalk thing, roadways, all that sort of stuff, probably not such a bad idea. I mean, I think your broader issue we can have of, you know, partnering up a little bit more with other boards is really spot on. And I think let's do this first because it's, there's a logical nexus here.
What's might be great too is as part of the MS4 permit, which I know we sent in the draft NOI to EPA and we have to have a public, public hearing, which we hope to, again, to have on November 1st. I mean, that ties nicely in with that.
So I'm sorry, do we have a meeting November 1st? Is that here or is that separate?
That, that is separate.
Okay, that's separate, okay.
Yes. And when we...
Thursday, November 1st, okay, that's separate. Yeah, so that would be great, yeah, I agree. So do you think we could ask them if they'd be willing to come and kind of share that information? And if it's okay with you, Peter, if there are questions about what we're looking for?
Maybe I could just write a draft and something very, very short that says basic measures compared to the 87 report and a five or 10-year trend line.
And if you want to just submit that to planning and then if they can just come in and we can just have a discussion. It's not like we're not grilling anyone. We're not, you know, putting, we just want to have a discussion about it to inform our, you know, what, how we look at our special permit requirements.
Right, and you can say it's purely informational and, and again, it ties in with the MS4, so it ties, so we can say it ties in with a number of things that we're already working on.
I think that's a great place to start and then we can look at, like other, if there are other boards, other departments that we can, you know, that we can just kind of work with and help them and they help us and...
And just one other quick item, I don't want to hog all of it, but is there any appropriate role for the planning board to help with the recovery from the gas disaster? Now, at first look, I'm thinking, gee, I don't really think of any, but I'm thinking especially in terms of business recovery. For example, would it be helpful if we had some type of expedited approval process for a business that needed planning board approval? And it might be that none do, but even extending the offer, if in fact we could, I'm just wondering if there's anything we can do to, as a show or demonstration of support. And I'm, I'm really not sure if there is, but if there was something, I think we should try to exercise support, particularly with recovery of the business community.
I think you could, you could look at something, just beyond the recent events, that, that if, if there were any kind of similar disaster, like say just for, you know, downtown, a row of buildings happened to... like say, just for, you know, downtown, a row of buildings happened to catch on fire, um, having that, um, i- i- if, if develop, redevelopment required, um, special permits, or any action on, by this board to, um, expedite that process, um, it's just worth looking, it's certainly worth looking into.
Are you saying you'd like to be part of, like a disaster recovery, like a...
No, I, I think, I think there either, there're kinda, two kinda things there, one, is there anything specific we can do right now, right? So I don't know if that's, you know, an email to the, uh, Merchants Association, just say, hey, you know, planning board's here, if anybody needs some, you know, to discuss some sort of zoning relief, because they're changing, they have to change their business model, because they aren't gonna be open for four months, they can't run as a restaurant, and for the next four months, they wanna be a, uh, you know, a laundromat, I'm, just something that they wanna change, that they would need some sort of zoning relief on, or some sort of help with. Um, the second point is, is would there be some sort of bylaw that would be appropriate to maybe allow for expedited review? And we can kinda think about that, I mean, obviously, we self...
There actually already is something.
There may be.
My recollection of, were, like if something burns down, and you rebuild it on the spot, you, you basically get sort of waived any pre-existing non-conforming use problems, so...
So, but we can look into that.
Right, I can find it exactly, even if there's something like more immediate that you could do, I can, I can find out, and, um, bring that at the next meeting.
Even reporting on it might give some business owners in the community some relief to, to, to know that that's in place.
There is, John, there's an emergency section, that's impressive.
Yeah, there you go.
You've been doing this for a while? Wow.
Okay, that's good to know. Um, okay. Is there any other topics people are interested in?
I, I don't think so, but I did just, I just wanted to circle back, I, I like Peter's notion of looking, u- using data to look at the resources in the community, to, to judge whether our, um, our zoning bylaws need to be adjusted, you know, one way or another.
Mm-hmm.
Tightened, loosened, um, and I, I think the, the lake is a great place to, to start with that, um, we, we should always be, because it's, it's, specifically with the lake, I know we've had a couple of, um, uh, special permit applicant, well, we had one, I think, special permit application watershed, um, and then another waiver where we, they were homeowners, just looking to do some work on their property, and, um, uh, the, the board, in essence, had, had to, I, I, I think, explain a little bit as to, to why the process was even necessary. And I, I think once people hear the stakes of that, I think they're much more willing to participate, um, in that process, so, so that the community at, a- 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 as a whole, um, knows that there, that resource is being protected. But then, you know, on the other side, we certainly wanna make it a very reasonable process for everyone, so, so being able to point to data, and with an eye towards, always trying to adjust the bylaws, I, I, I think it's, and that's a great first step right there.
We have a potential feedback loop here, we gotta take a look at it.
Yeah. For sometime in, in the next couple of meetings, could we get an update, maybe, have you guys done more work with that, uh, with the group focusing on the, uh, town center and the common area?
Not that much has happened, I think the kindergarten was such an overwhelming thing, that I, I think they've just sort of recovered from that, but uh, I think what's going to happen is, I mean, obviously, at this point, they're not gonna do anything underground until the spring, and I think it's probably lining up, you know, contractors, and, you know, I think they have the final plans, so, but they have to bid the thing, I think that's probably the big thing. But, yeah, I'll, uh, w- we check regularly at the UCPA on that stuff anyways, so, yeah.
Are we talking about?
No, no, I'm sorry.
Are you talking about the historical society building?
Yes, that's what I was talking about.
Oh, the historical, oh, I thought you were talking about the, uh, the, the Parks and Recreation.
No, no, I know that, yeah.
Uh, the historical society one, I, I, Peter and I are both there, um, I would say that, how would I say it? The historical society has not carefully and thoroughly thought through their business case for what they wanna do with that property, and that's the sticking point, that's probably, I don't know, Peter, I, I, I'm trying to say it fairly and cleanly, and I think that's a fair assessment, because they were supposed to come back to the last meeting, and they didn't, and I'm not sure they are planning on doing it, I, but...
We'll postpone, we'll give them more time, and we'll see if they do.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
It would be great if there's, was something that was workable, but it has to be the right thing, and, okay.
Been a lot of discussion of, you know, this sort of area of activity, taking care of, and use of buildings is not necessarily their core skill set.
Yeah.
And kinda the example of what's happened to that building is pretty compelling, it's...
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a building that's not that old, and frankly, all those problems are on the historical society as the owner.
Yep. So... There any role for the town to step in, help?
I mean, we've talked about that, you know, at one level, I, I wouldn't say there's a consensus, but my belief is that the best possible use for that is a quasi-municipal type use. Yeah, similar, in, in museums, that sort of similar type function as well. The problem is, it's the cost of the refurbishment that's the killer there, that's the problem, it's, you know, do you wanna, I, I, you wanna put up that much money to cover the cost of making that a functional, uh, facility, that's, that really is the issue, and I'm not sure, the town, you know, that's not high on the hit parade for the town right now, so...
And the parking is limited, and certainly for some uses is, uh, ideal, but, you know, parking and keeping the traffic low, keeping in the character of that important area to the town, and then you add the cost, and it's not just the cost of, you know, fixing up an old building, it's the cost of substantial repairs to a seriously deteriorated building that's not that old. It's, it's in pretty bad shape.
Okay.
So it's, it's tough.
Yeah, it didn't seem easy. Uh, okay, um, great, well, thank you everybody for coming, I know it was a light agenda, uh, we will have, you know, I think some, definitely some more stuff on the sixteenth, with, um, with Ree Street coming back. So, could we get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor individually?
John Simon votes to adjourn.
Jennifer Loz votes to adjourn.
Aaron Preston votes to adjourn.
Vote to adjourn.
Vote to adjourn.
Alright, five oh, thank you, Jennifer.
Yep, thanks, Jen.